Good morning, it is nine o'clock. We're going to start the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Today, our agenda, all action will be taken on items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration. Items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions and comments by the general public. Any such restriction must be reasonable. They restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of County Commissioners convening as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, the Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board. And during this meeting, they convene as any of those boards, as indicated on this, or a separately posted agenda. A meeting may break today between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. Today's roll call, we have all commissioners in chambers. An invocation today will be given by John Poundstone of Joy Church. He's on Zoom. Go ahead, Mr. Poundstone.
Good morning, elected officials and staff. What an honor it is to join you in prayer this morning. Heavenly Father, we come before you humbly and yet expectantly at the same time. And thank you for the awesome privilege it is to join together in a county such as ours with access to our officials and access to the business. And our county officials being so open to public participation. It is indeed a great honor left not many places in our nation have it. So, Father, I thank you for that. I thank you for your goodness, your steadfastness, your mercy. As we approach this next calendar quarter with all of the craziness that's in the air and the craziness to come, and especially over today's meeting, your scriptures talk about and ask us to maintain the unity, to maintain unity in spirit through the bond of peace. May that happen today and may that happen in the coming weeks. Father, lastly, I want to thank you for the business that's before the board this morning. Please guide them. Please, using divine wisdom, help them to make great decisions on behalf of the taxpayers, the electorate, and our citizens. Once again, we thank you, God, for your goodness. I pray these things in the masterful name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you.
During the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the US Constitution.
Item four, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It's anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. Do we have any public comment this morning? See any on Zoom? And nobody is coming forward, so we will move on to item five. For possible action, review and adoption of agenda. Any commissioner input for the agenda? Changing anything? Any public input? If not, then I will look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Chairman Hockaday will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Okay. A motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes five zero. Going to item six, presentation of awards and/or recognition of accomplishments. Now, Gavin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, we have a fantastic recognition of achievement today. So, Lyon County wants to applaud our new plans examiner, Ray Brown, for earning the International Co-Counsel's Master Co-Professional Designation. The Master Co-Professional Designation is the highest level co-counsel certifications and the gold standard for demonstrating proficiency in the co-profession. Ray Brown joins the elite group of master co-professionals. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ray, which is in the audience. It's one of eight hundred in the world. Pretty fantastic. Ray Brown joins the elite group whose achievements continue to benefit both co enforcement profession as well as the communities they serve. Just a brief background on the requirements for the MCP designation. The candidate must first pass ten core ICC exams plus a number of elective co-counsel exams, and then the typical master co-professional holds seventeen or more co-counsel certifications. The master co-professional designation also requires certified individuals to complete additional sixty hours of continuing education classes. So, a lot of work to even get to this point. A lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of classes, a lot of books, a lot of studying. So, today, we want to recognize Ray Brown. For it. There you go, sir. Thank you. You're welcome. And I appreciate it. You want to say anything? If not, no worries. Um.
Speech.
Speech. Looking at speeches. Thank you. I appreciate it. And I look forward to putting this certification to Houston County the best I can. Not to let anyone down. Thank you. Yeah.
Before you leave, I just wanted to say that's quite a significant achievement, and we really appreciate it because that makes you a great asset to the county. Thank you very much for pushing in all that hard work. Anybody else want to make a comment here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Get to work. Okay, moving on to seven time certain, we are at nine oh eight. So, our first time certain is nine oh five for possible action presentation given by Mike Kellogg from J E Fuller and to adopt Stagecoach Area Drainage Master Plan.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Mike Kellogg. I'm with J E Fuller Hydrology and Geomorphology, and I'm the project manager for the Stagecoach Area Drainage Master Plan. We recently completed this study, and so we're here to present the results to you. But before doing that, I want to just report, we had a public meeting on Tuesday evening with the residents of Stagecoach. Did the same presentation. It was well attended. There were two members of the commission at that meeting, and we had a lot of good questions from residents, and I think we were able to answer all their questions. Normally, we have, everybody leaves the meeting at least a half an hour before the meeting is scheduled to be done. We've answered all questions, but the residents in Stagecoach stayed until the very end. In fact, we had to kick them out of the building because we had the, we only had the building reserved until a certain time. And they were just curious and asking a lot of good questions and really wanting to learn. So, it was an excellent meeting. I felt that the residents received the information well, and we answered a lot of good questions from them. So, we're going to, I'm going to be presenting that same presentation today to you on our Stagecoach Area Drainage Master Plan study. Yeah, it's, it's on.
I tried to warn you.
I don't. Yeah, the laser pointer isn't working, so I think the batteries are shot, maybe. I have this exactly. Okay, thank you. So, I'll first begin to talk about kind of the overall project purpose. This was a planning level study of identifying flooding, the flood risk within the entire watershed that drains into Stagecoach. And we had four main goals of this study. The first was to develop a comprehensive understanding of the existing flood risk. Where, where does it flood? How, how often and how big and how deep? That was really the first goal, is to get, wrap our arms around what's the existing conditions flooding like out in Stagecoach. And then develop a data set that will assist the community and Lyon County with any future development that occurs out there. And we know that there's active development happening in Stagecoach. And then to develop regional flood mitigation solutions to present some concept ideas and things that might help mitigate some of the flooding that they see. And then finally, develop a cost benefit analysis. So, select one of the mitigation alternatives and, and do a cost benefit analysis to see if this project could potentially get funding through federal agencies for construction. So, the project funding, this project was funded by what's called a FEMA. It was funded by FEMA through what's called a Cooperative Technical Partner Brand. And that Cooperative Technical Partner is the Carson Water Subconservancy District. They, they have a relationship with FEMA as a CTP partner. They write grants for different projects, and then FEMA funds those studies. So, the vast majority of the funding for this project came from FEMA. Carson Water Subconservancy District is kind of the project administrator of the funding for the Area Drainage Master Plan, and then the technical team comprised of J E Fuller with Lumos and Associates was, also helped us on this project to do all the technical analysis and the recommendations. So, we had two meetings for this project. The first meeting was held in February of last year where we met with the residents in Stagecoach. We introduced the project, let them know what the goals were. And the most important part of that meeting was to receive their input. We wanted them to come tell us where do they see flooding? Do they have pictures? Do they have videos? What has been their experience with flooding in their community? So, we collect that information and we use it in our analysis, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes, how we use it. And that meeting was well attended, and we got a lot of good information from the residents. And then the meeting number two was actually on Tuesday night where we presented the project findings, the same information that you all will be seeing today. So, there's a lot of, this, this is a large study. It's a large watershed. There's a lot of technical elements to this. In summary, we collected a lot of information, a lot of data. We had very good, very recent topographic mapping that was done by the U S Geological Survey. We looked at the landforms within the watershed. It's a very important component to a study like this, is identifying the different types of landforms because they exhibit different types of flooding depending on the landform type. We did a very comprehensive hydrologic and hydraulic model. And then we took those results of the modeling and developed some flood risk classifications, flood risks to people, to buildings, and to roads. Sediment is a big problem in Stagecoach, and it's a big problem in a lot of communities along the Carson River watershed. And so, we wanted to be able to understand what the sediment issues were. There's culverts that are constantly clogging with sediment. Sediment gets on roads, and then it makes them impassable for a time until the county can come out and clean them off. So, we did some sediment engineering to identify and quantify the amount of sediment that's moving through. And then, as I mentioned, we, we came up with some alternatives for mitigation, and then the cost benefit analysis. So, we looked at previous studies, including any, any existing flood insurance studies that were in the area. There really, there really isn't any major flood insurance studies in Stagecoach at this time. We also collected a lot of data from the county, land use, buildings, basessor parcels, any, any sort of updated information that the county had in a digital format. We collected and integrated into our study. I mentioned the topographic mapping. We had very new twenty twenty and twenty seventeen USGS LiDAR mapping. That type of mapping is critical to a study like this, having accurate representation of the topography of the ground is really important. And because that mapping was available, we didn't have to pay for somebody to go fly new mapping, which can be quite expensive. And so, we were able to, to have this project funded partly because we had good mapping already available to us. So, the landform assessment, Stagecoach has some, some kind of unique landforms, one of those being alluvial fans. An alluvial fan is a, is a type of landform that has very unique flood risk characteristics, different than a river. And there's a lot of active alluvial fan landforms within the Stagecoach community, a lot of, many of which have development already on them. And so, identifying where those were and how many and their extents were important. Also, you, Stagecoach is unique in that it, it's what we call an internally drained, drained basin. All of the, all the flow drains to a playa. It doesn't actually make it to the Carson River as surface water. So, that's kind of unique. All the, all the rain that falls within Stagecoach stays within the watershed. So, I'll talk for a minute about the hydrologic modeling. So, that's the first component of this study is hydrology. And what I mean by hydrology is, is estimating how much rainfall falls on the surface of the watershed, how much infiltrates into the soil, and then, once the soil is saturated, how much water runs off and becomes flooding. So, we used very new information provided by NDOT. They recently completed a statewide study where they identified new rainfall hyita graphs for the state in addition to infiltration information statewide. That, that is very new information that we, we collected from, from NDOT, and we identified. So, because this is a FEMA study, we are kind of required to work within their kind of standards of what they look at for floods and storms. And so, we looked at a five-year storm, a twenty-five-year storm. Those are twenty-four-hour, a hundred-year, six-hour storm, and then a hundred-year, twenty-four-hour storm. And those are, those are statistical about values. It's a little bit of a misnomer to think of them as a hundred-year storm. It's a, it's a percent chance event. So, you may have a one-hundred-year storm, but that doesn't mean you're not going to have one for another hundred years. You could have one next year or the year after. It's a statistical assessment, so. But that's how, that's the standard FEMA approach to these storms. So, we, we use those, and then we use the NDOT infiltration method for estimating how much of the, of that rainfall gets absorbed into the soil during a storm event. For the hydraulic modeling, we use the latest technology, two-dimensional hydraulic model that incorporates that LiDAR USGS that I talked about, the infiltration information that we got from NDOT, the land use, any structures that are out in the, we, we went and looked at all the culverts that are out in the community, make sure we had those in our model. There's a lot of culverts underneath Highway fifty, different culverts within the community. We also wanted to verify the results. So, there aren't USGS stream gauges in Stagecoach, so there's no real history on how much flooding they've seen and measured. And so, we needed to verify our results to make sure our model was reasonable. And part of what we used for that was all of that information we collected from the residents when they sent us pictures of, hey, here's where we see flooding all the time. Here's pictures of flooding. Does our model reflect what they see? And so, that was really valuable for us to verify our model. So, we have what we call an existing condition model, which is what it looks like today when it floods, and I'm going to show you an animation. I'll let it loop a few times so you can see it. It sped up. This is over a twenty-four-hour period, but we're speeding it up to about twenty seconds. So, the floods don't go this fast, but this is what it looks like if a one percent chance event were to occur in Stagecoach. And you can see the large playa down towards the, towards the middle there. That's where everything's draining to that playa, and you can see the water gets deeper and deeper as the storm progresses. But you can see the extent of flooding up in the Stagecoach community, both north and south of Highway fifty. You'll notice that the flooding is very widespread, and, and it's not contained in a few distinct channels. It's kind of flooding everywhere, and that's a characteristic of an alluvial fan landform. So, I mentioned sediment. We looked at sediment. We collected samples throughout the community to get a sense of what, how, what size of sediment is being transported, so we could integrate that into our model, so we can quantify the volumes of sediment moving through. Because we know, like I mentioned, culverts are constantly being clogged and needing to be cleaned out. So, these are some of the results of our sediment modeling. I apologize the, when we, the PowerPoint got put on this computer, the fonts are different, and so they shouldn't be hiding behind these figures. I apologize for that. I didn't expect that, but work around it. So, I mentioned the verification of our results. So, the, the image on the right is some pictures that we received from residents of flooding and where those photos are taken with respect to our modeling results. And so, everywhere that we saw pictures, where we had pictures and information, our modeling confirmed that, that that's where we're seeing flooding, and so that was a good confirmation that we were on the right track. We also looked at USGS regression information, which is a kind of a regional statistic of, of flooding, and to make sure that our, our flood values fall within the range of values that would be expected within the region. And we found that our values fall within, within that. So, we felt good that our modeling was, was sound and, and appropriate. So, now we have our modeling completed. We have our modeling results. We started to classify the different types of risks. And the first type that we looked at is pedestrian. So, it's essentially how deep does the flow have to be to sweep someone off their feet as a, as a danger? And we use children as kind of the standard for that. And so, we, we looked at information that looks at how much flow depth does it require to sweep someone away? And then we developed some data for the county now to know, these are the areas where you want to make sure people aren't where the, when the flooding occurs. And so, it's more to educate the community. When it floods, make sure you don't go here. It sounds intuitive, and it is, and the people that live out there know, when it floods, you don't go here and here. But now, we have a quantified way to look at that, and we know what the actual depths of flow are in these different locations. The next area we looked at was risk to vehicles. So, how much depth does it require to stall a vehicle out or even sweep a vehicle away? You've all seen videos of cars being swept away during floods. And so, we want to identify different roads and intersections where the flow would be deep enough to cause a problem to vehicles. So, we developed that data. The county now has this information. So, when they have a large flood event, they know which intersections, maybe they need to go and close off so that people don't drive through them. And then finally, we looked at flood risk to buildings. So, we took every single building in Stagecoach that's, that was greater than six hundred square feet. We, we didn't look at small outbuildings like sheds and barns and things, even though those structures might have valuable, contain valuables from people. We wanted to primarily focus on residential areas and, and commercial areas that where people are living and inhabiting. So, we identified every single building in the community and looked at how much flooding or what depth of flooding is, occurs at each building and classified them as, as low, moderate, or high risk based on the amount of flow depth. So, now that county has this data set as well that identified every building and how much flooding each building gets during this type of storm event. Okay, so, we have all our hydraulic modeling. It's, it's lots and lots and lots of good information. Let's start looking at how we can mitigate. What are things, types of projects that can be done to help alleviate some of this flooding? And as I mentioned, Stagecoach has some unique characteristics. One, there's minimal drainage infrastructure in place out there today. There's alluvial fans that result in this widespread distributary flow kind of all over the place. That's a very challenging thing to try to fix. And it's a closed basin watershed. Everything drains into itself. So, we wanted to develop both regional alternatives, large sort of structures that would fix huge areas all at once, and then also kind of look at more local mitigation alternatives where we knew that there were local problems when these storm events occur. So, as part of that, we developed six regional basins that include collector channels and conveyance channels. These basins are, are collecting flow volume and sediment volume because there's a lot of sediment, as I mentioned, and so we needed to account for that volume of sediment, you know, coming into these basins to also account for the stormwater volume that, that, that they would capture. So, we identified six locations where a basin would provide some meaningful mitigation. However, the storms are large, and the watershed is quite large, which means there's large volumes of water coming off of the mountains. And so, when you have a large water volume and a large sediment volume, it equals a large structure. In order to have any impact at all, the structures have to be quite large in order to contain the sediment and the water. And when you have large structures and you have a high gradient slope, that can be very costly to build that type of structure. It is possible, but it's just expensive. And so, I'll talk about that in a minute. And then we also, I said, mentioned, we had some local alternatives that aren't quite as large of scale, more local. And mainly, these were focused on different streets that would receive flooding, and then they, the water wouldn't drain off the streets very easily. They would, it would pond up and be there for days, and residents would have a hard time moving in and out. And so, we identified those locations and recommended some improvements to the roads to allow for better drainage on the roads. And then one of those is a, is a collector channel that we're calling the empty channel that's kind of north of Highway fifty. I'll go into detail, more detail with that. So, these help with roadway drainage and, and with roadway sediment accumulation. So, we have those six basins. We have these local alternatives. We did some concept formal engineering design plans for them. The county now has that information. These are, these were then integrated into our model to make sure that they were performing as we would have hoped. And many of them have a, most of them have a really large impact on reducing flooding. So, this is a table that lists the costs of these structures. So, the top part of the table, these are the basin structures, the regional large basins, and we included the total construction costs. We estimated what the operation and maintenance costs would be over, let's say, a twenty-year period, and then a twenty-year, a net present value cost. And then the local structures are at the bottom. There's a lot of numbers here, and, and the report that, that this came right out of our report, which was included in the agenda today. You guys can go back and look at that in more detail. But this is just a, an overall view of what our estimated costs are for some of these structures. So, now I'm going to show another animation with all of these basins and local improvements in place. You'll see where the basins will show up because you'll see flow depth increasing where the basins are, and it goes to that red color where the deeper flow is. And you'll see that the down- And you'll see that the downstream impact um to the community is, is quite significant from these basins being in place. So you see a lot less flow volume getting down to the playa. And there still is some flooding within the community, but it's significantly less than. Than before. These basins, the intent of these basins is to store a large volume and then release that volume slowly over time. So there still is downstream impacts, but they're significantly reduced. Um, again, this comes out of the report and you can look at this in, in more detail in the report, but. We wanted to look at the number of, of buildings that we removed from the flood risk. By these alternatives. If they were to be constructed. Um, so we classified the buildings as, as, as having a high hazard if they were inundated by a foot or greater of depth. The moderate hazards were six inches to a foot. And then the low hazards were less than six inches. And so the top part of this uh grid is. The twenty-five-year storm up here. Um, and how many buildings were removed? With the um, with the mitigation alternatives. And then the bottom is for the hundred-year storm. How many buildings were removed for each um of these different um alternatives? We also wanted to look at the total area of flow reduction within the community based on these alternatives. And so the best way to interpret this figure, it seems kind of busy and there's a lot of information on it. It would take you a few minutes to kind of stare at it and really. Get all the pieces of it, but the, the key takeaway is. Any of the colors that are like yellow and green. Those represent. Reductions in flow depth based on the alternatives in place. So you could see that throughout most of Stagecoach, we're seeing a significant reduction in overall flow depth. With these alternatives in place. This is for the twenty-five-year storm. And this is for the hundred-year storm. So we see a, a significant reduction um in overall depth of flow. With these alternatives in place. So we, the, uh, the data that these models generate is, is large and extensive and um very, very informative. But we wanted to provide something to the county that would be something real simple and easy to use to just estimate. Where the depths are and how much. So if, say, if somebody wants to come in for a, a permit to build something, a, a, a. RV garage on their lot. The county would have a quick reference to see, well, how much flow is coming across your property now that we need to have you account for. And so we developed this quick, quick writ, quick risk reference dataset. That just has flow depths at one foot, two foot, three, four, five, six, and greater than six. So it's kind of a quick view of where is the, the deepest flow and you can zoom in. This is um. Live GIS information. And so the county officials can zoom in and look at a specific lot and how much uh flow depth is on that lot. Very quickly. Okay, so the final part of this analysis was a benefit cost. Analysis um. In order to es- to acquire federal funding to construct any one of these uh alternatives. Um, the federal agencies require a benefit cost analysis. And. We followed the FEMA guidelines for how you do this type of analysis, which accounts for damages to buildings. Um, a, a content damages inside of the buildings, displacement costs if people are unable to. Live there while their house is being retrofitted or fixed. Um, and. For a cost benefit analysis. The ratio of one or greater is good. It's, it's more challenging to get a grant if your benefit cost ratio is less than one. You can still get them. And it's just sometimes more difficult. And so if you can get a benefit cost ratio of one or greater. Then that's a much easier um way to get a, a grant to actually build one of these facilities. So we follow the FEMA standards to do this analysis. Um, we worked with Lyon County uh officials on which of these structures should we look at? Um, our project allowed for us to look at one of these facilities as a benefit cost. And together we selected the NP channel alternative as the one to look at. And so the, this table is a summary of, of, of that analysis. But the key takeaway is at the end of the day, the final cost benefit was one point three. So that's a, a favorable cost benefit. This project could potentially be um. Easily uh applied for, uh for a grant through FEMA. And the cost benefit analysis suggests that it would receive uh funding pending funding available. Um, that it's kind of met that first step towards getting funding to construct. The facility. So I want to show you a zoomed-in uh animation of the NP channel and what it's doing. It's collecting. Flow, so. Um, up here, you can see this is an alluvial fan and, and this kind of light coloring is. Is sediment that's kind of being deposited on the surface. And you can see all of this sediment and flow is kind of dumping right into this community here right now. So we proposed a channel to collect that flow. Carry it down to Highway fifty and then through Highway fifty. So you can see the NP channel. Here, collecting the flow. All of this flow uh in existing conditions comes right across. And affects all of these residents. All through here. And this, this collector channel that moves flow down and underneath the highway. Is a significant benefit. The cost, the benefit cost ratio was, was favorable. So that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions. I'll start down with uh Commissioner Jacobson. Any questions?
Well, thank you. Um, I, I did appreciate uh your presentation the other night and, and uh the time. Uh, and uh concern, um acknowledgement. You gave all of the question askers. There was probably. I think thirty-five, forty people there, so I thought it was well attended. Um, and you did a very nice job there. Um, one question I had, and I believe I might have been standing by, is when this would be published online for residents? I don't know.
Um, it's available now. The county has a um. Copy of the final report and um. They, it'll be up on their website. I, I also make this presentation available. So that's, I'm not sure, but that's maybe a Gavin.
Right on. I just wanted. Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, um. Once we formally adopt it, we can now.
Right. Okay. I just, I, I believe the wa- the Carson Water Subconservancy was there and I appreciated their attendance as well. Um. I was impressed uh as surface water experts. You even tried to answer groundwater questions, um retention basin questions and. Um, I guess that's surface water, but, but uh very impressed with that. Um. Back to the retention basins. Uh, there's six of them. Is that correct? And some of them are already there or maybe not?
So there's nothing formal. So one of them is in an, in the old um N dot gravel. Kind of pit, kind of right in the middle of the community. There's a, there's a little square BLM parcel. Right in the middle of Stagecoach. And we wanted to try to maximize that parcel because um then the county wouldn't have to purchase that property. So we, we put a basin there um and tried to make it as. It, it works. It does help. It's the volume that gets to that basin is, is really large and there's a lot of sediment. So that basin isn't very effective. In fact, it's probably the least effective of, of all of them because we were constrained to that parcel limit. But the de- but downstream of that is that NP channel. So we feel like that NP channel alone could do the work of the basin and the channel. But we, we wanted to see if we could store some volume in that. So there's that. And then um kind of on this, on the. Um, western side of Stagecoach, just north of Highway fifty is a, is another kind of open pit. But it's an end dot pit. That um is there now. It's, it does collect flow in existing conditions, but it's not. The flow doesn't get in there real easily. So we're proposing to use that and expand it and make it a more formal. Um, basin and then have a collector channel that puts the flow into it. And that one has a really large impact on the community downstream. Right now they're getting flooded on, a lot. And that basin would really help them tremendously.
Um, and then these guidelines will also help the county. Develop. Future and hold future. Um. Development accountable to, to make. Um, the necessary um to help fund some of these improvements.
So I see that as the most valuable part of this study is now the county has comprehensive. Existing condition flood data. Now, when a developer comes in. They don't, they, they, they're not going to be doing their own hydrology. They're not going to be telling the county, this is how much flow is getting to my property. Because developers will do things differently. You know, the county has standards and, and they have to follow that. But there are subtle differences. Hydrology is, is not an, an exact science by any means and you can. Um, you can manipulate things to make things more favorable for your project. Not that people do that, but um, but it's possible. And so now the county has this comprehensive existing condition. Everybody's using the same thing. Developer over here, the county says, use the data from this study. That'll tell you how much flooding is on your site. Developer over here is the same thing. They're all using one consistent dataset. Um, and so now if a development wants to, a developer wants to come in, they, they plop their development in. Our model, we can run the model and see, are, are you adversely impacting anyone? How are you handling the flows across your property? The county can review that now and have a, a really good handle on if this development. Um, is going to work or is it going to cause more problems or what are they doing? To mitigate. So. That's, I think, the most valuable part of this is now we have this dataset that, if the county can use.
Again, I was very impressed and I appreciate this presentation today. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. You touched on a little bit and I was just curious about the different basins that you had as far as the beneficial uh. Who owns them?
Yeah.
That type of thing. Are we going to have to purchase? We're gonna, what are we gonna have to do? Especially on your channels, when you're starting to run your channels, you're actually increasing some flows. And uh to disperse it like, uh, once you get under the highway and then it's going to disperse. Is that going to go on private property or is that? Well, how's that makeup?
It is. So everywhere, there's not a lot of public land uh within the area where these basins could go. There's some. Some BLM land up in the, up a watershed in that one parcel I mentioned. So yeah, so that would be a part of this is acquiring easements. And purchasing the property to build these basins. Um, we also looked at. Kind of preliminarily, the idea instead of a basin. A channel that would carry the flow from the mountains all the way down below the highway and down to the playa. And the challenge with that option is to do that, you have to. It would be purchasing a lot of existing homes and lots that are already developed. And the cost would generally be higher and. It would be really difficult if, if one or two residents said, I don't want to do that. I don't want to sell my property to the county and move. Then the whole project's off. So we tried to look at where we could build things that were currently undeveloped. It is private land. But um, but, but we're kind of limited in how we can, we try to. Do the least, uh, I guess invasive approach when we look at these things. Um, but those made more sense from a cost perspective and from just a feasibility. Perspective to do them where they are.
I would just, when we start putting stuff on maps. Hannah, we don't own the property and we're deciding that's the best place for a basin. We could end up with a little bit of a, a problem, I, I would imagine.
I may also state, um, the design constraints, those are all the apex locations. So that's where all the flows come down and that's where we can get the most beneficial part of gathering. So that's another restriction.
And these are recommended only. There's no, the county's not obligated in any way. To construct them. It's simply a concept that will work. It's, I would say it's up to the county and the community to work together, decide, do we want these and are we willing to work together to? Get the grants and get them constructed and that sort of thing, so.
And, and is there any, any of those areas favorable to, like you just said, that the, are they, are they ranked, I guess, as far as what we can? How we can move forward?
We do. We do have in our report a kind of a priority of what we recommend. Um, we just, we didn't have funding to do. A, a benefit cost on all of them. So we picked one that we thought would, would for sure get us the most benefit, um, a, a benefit cost of one. But um, we do have a priority in the report of what we think uh based on cost and um. A benefit, what we think would be the right priority. But uh, but yeah, we don't have that benefit cost. So that would kind of be the next step is if the county decided we want to build this basin. Let's look at the benefit cost of that structure and make sure that we're, we're good and then move forward with getting a grant.
Do we ever go into partnerships with uh people that are looking for the, the gravel or the materials that are? And when we do develop these basins that we can. Uh, work in partnerships with that? That we can look into?
Yeah.
Because I know when they were doing USA Parkway, there was a couple of spots that we were thinking about doing retention. Things that they could use the. The materials for that, so. I was just curious if the county could use it, use the material for a, a pit or something, so.
One of the, one of the biggest costs is haul, haul off of this, of the dirt you're digging these out. And if you can get. Contractors that need it to haul it off for you, then they don't have to go as far and, yeah, it's a, it's good. It's a good idea.
Well, if it's good stuff, we got a lot of county roads that. Are kind of dirt and gravel.
Yeah.
I did want to, and to take another point. This is, the study is a living document, right? So this is the regional. Design, regional name plan, and now it gives us opportunity like Mike mentioned where we can kind of isolate and kind of look at. Do more studies on a granular level. Kind of come up with more, maybe local alternatives or products are more financially.
That's all I had.
Commissioner Harrison.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. Thank you for the presentation. Very comprehensive. I don't think I have any trouble going to sleep tonight because I'm gonna take that home and read some more of it. So that, that's why I don't, I don't really have any, any questions. Just thank you for the presentation.
The people of Stagecoach are very good about showing up and speaking up, so I appreciate you. Coming out and giving them this presentation and answering all of their questions. I think that's a huge help. And I'm really happy to have this tool for both the county and for developers moving forward to not keep making the same mistakes.
Yeah, I thought it was a very logical approach, um extremely thorough. I like the color versus our black and white that we know. All of this stuff.
Oh, you're saying copies are all black and white?
Yeah.
That does not work nowadays.
Yeah, we.
To really understand what we do.
Yeah, the cost of uh sending us all these big documents in color would be phenomenally expensive. Um, but yeah, it's so much easier to understand when you have. Especially the little video there that would be fantastic to show it. Um. You probably need to look and discuss the, keeping these existing pits clean, clear and whatever we have to do to make sure that we can at least. Collect as much water coming down. Alluvial fan as possible. Uh, I do kind of agree with um Commissioner Callahan, you know, when we do identify things. That. People go, oh my gosh, you know, county says I have horrible land. They should already know. I mean, you have a, the floods. Situations that we've had in the last few years and that in, in the past. I think people know when their property is a foot deep in water or two feet deep. So in a way, you know, I agree, but I also say if they don't know they have a flood problem. Where, where have they been? Uh, but I also know that many times people buy property without ever checking. On documents. And they end up building homes that get flooded immediately. Uh, or they. Have floods and then they sell the homes to people who don't know that they had floods. So. Uh, it is, I think, a good idea for us to identify and have this on our website so that people can look and developers can look. And make sure that the developing safe. Hopefully as flood-free property as possible. So.
That's a good point. Prior to this study, there wasn't. People knew that, that flooding occurs, but um, but there was no way to know how much and where and. Um, as a, as, as a, as a tool. And so now that data is available and. Um, it's, it's going to be valuable, I think, for the community and for the county moving forward.
I just point out that it's a hundred-year flood and somebody could have lived there for not, you know, fifty years and never flooded.
Yep.
So, so there's, there's always that. It never does.
Yeah.
You know, and I hear that a lot, but.
We do too. Uh, you know, I've lived out here forty years and I've never seen the flow depths that you're showing and. Um, it's because you haven't seen the type of storm that, that we're modeling here, but. But you, you know, that we do know that flooding does occur. Um, and that's why we, looking at the. but you, you know, that we do know that flooding does occur. And that's why we, looking at those other storm events, the twenty-five year, five-year show more of what people see more frequently.
Hey, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Now, this is an action item, so public, public input or public comment?
Mr. Chair, before we get to that, Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager, so I do need to make a disclosure. I do own multiple properties in Stagecoach and that would cover, or the this plan does cover. And there are several of the improvements that are listed in there would affect my properties as well. I was not involved in the development of the plan. Community Development Director was the one that was actively involved. I think the only involvement that I had initially was when was reviewing the scope of work, but I do want to make that disclosure so that it's transparent.
Hey, Chairman Hockney. Yes.
Well, I'm glad you live in Lion County and not some of these other neighboring counties, so that's good to hear.
You don't own one of those basins, do you?
No, sir. I will say that one of them, we did throw in the lands bill because we were reviewing the preliminary results of this.
Good planning on that. Appreciate it. And since we're not allowing you to vote on this, that's okay. We're good. Any other input? Seeing none, then this is an action item where we do need a
Make a motion. Make a, I move to adopt the Stagecoach Area Drainage Master Plan presented by J E Fuller.
Well, second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes five zero, plan is adopted. Thank you for all your work on this. It's definitely going to be beneficial to the county. That's a word. Moving on, time certain ten, nine, ten. For possible action, presentation given by Chuck Reno, County Engineer, and to adopt the amended twenty eighteen drainage guidelines for Lion County, including new requirements for projects within area drainage master plan, ADMP designated areas.
Yeah, my name is Chuck Reno.
Yeah.
I'm with Dall Engineering, acting county engineer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners. We should have online as we, Damon McAllister of Dall Engineering, who they called in. And then, of course, Mike Helons here to help with any technical questions that we need it. But yeah, my name's Chuck Reno. I've been the county engineer for quite a while now. Back in two thousand and eighteen, we did a update to the drainage standards, which hadn't been updated since, I think it was two thousand and six. So we did a quick update in two thousand and eighteen, which was good for the county. It's helped to to manage the storm drains and the guidelines there. And here we are in two thousand and twenty-four to do a quick update on this as well. The area drainage master plans have been adopted. We just adopted one now for Stagecoach. And we have four of them adopted so far. Or four of them in the mix, right? We have Dayton Valley Drainage Master Plan, the North, the South, then Stagecoach, and now the North Silver Springs, which is being done by Kimberly Horns. The first three were by J D Fuller. Of course, these these master plans help to incorporate the guidelines and to make things better for the community. So since the county commissioner is adopting these master plans, we need to update the guidelines to reflect the adoption of them and what that means to the county and how to implement them. There was a couple of housekeeping items and scroll down just a little. Where, where inside the flood zones, AO A and shaded X, we did some just quick housekeeping items to be ensure that people develop in those areas, develop high enough so that they don't get flooded. So in in the AO zone, it's one and a half feet and then of course you have to check the three and a half feet applies as well. And then all the other ones, you have to elevate the foot and a half above the adjacent maximum grades. So that was just housekeeping items. The wrong drainage area, the drainage guidelines. But then we ran ahead and added, if you slide down to item page seventeen, we added a drainage, sorry, page fifteen. We added area drainage master plan update standard. One up. And it just talked about the area drainage master plan, gives a little preamble about what it is and why we we have them and what what we can do to implement them. So as people go to developing their lots or you know, developers go to develop areas, they have to first see, are they in an area drainage master plan area? If they are, these standards apply. If they aren't, it's back to the normal standards of the county. And this is good for, for the community because the area drainage master plans have had very in-depth studies and we now know what we have to look at. And it's going to be cost effective for developers as well because we will provide them initial, here's the results of that area that you want to study. And with that initial results, then they can plan their, their their development and then give us back a drainage report that meets the guidelines. So we developed a flow chart. I wonder if you have that flow chart in application?
We'll have your presentation.
Trying to win without presentation, but people there. So again, we just talked about the four area drainage master plans. And incorporating the guidelines, the ADMPs into the guidelines. And of course, you've seen from J D Fuller, but here's a, this is the North Area Drainage Master Plan for Dayton Valley. And on the left is flow in CFS cubic feet per second and on the right is flow in depth. So how deep the water goes. And with all the study, if you were to develop inside that boundary, we would be able to provide you information, which would be a good for the, the development of it. We talked about some other updates to the, the development guidelines within the, you know, theme of defined flood zones. I'm just going to scroll from some of these and get to the flow chart here. So what we did is we developed a, a flow chart for somebody that comes in and says, hey, I live here. What do I need to do? And it's really simple from left to right. You just start there and say, okay. You know, it's a project greater than a square miles. If it isn't, then you go up into the other category here and you just kind of walk through the steps from left to right. And then you determine are you a tier one, tier two, or tier three? Applicant. We have a one-page application. I could, if you want to go over it, I'm happy to. We have a one-page application that we had everybody fill out. Yeah, some quick information, the applicant's name, a project information, a brief description and some quick questions. And then helps, there's a kind of flow chart here to help determine which tier you're in. And as we go through the, we wanted to make it very simple for people. So it doesn't become an almost thing, but that we utilize area drainage master plans that have been adopted. And we have some fee schedule on here. You see it's a hundred dollars for tier one, two, fifteen hundred dollars for a tier two, and a tier three, which is a really big, complex, maybe a big subdivision. That'll have an hour consultation with county staff and it'll be kind of a determined amount fee. And these fees are there to cover costs, to run the model, to check, to to provide them the results, so they can use them as like half of their drainage drainage reports that they have to provide back to the counties as justification for the development. Those are the fee schedules. And again, the fifteen hundred dollars is kind of a mid-sized land development. One hundred dollars is simply a family, single family, very small structure. And it really is just a bit of administrative hassle to, to to produce something like this. And I think it's like a, a quick drainage report that shows the outline of their area. It provides the CFS, you know, hydrograph, and it provides all the consultations that the report will generate. And so when someone comes in, we'll provide them that, that, that results and those results help to determine how best to develop the parcel. And so we have on here September eighteenth, right? The board approval, the revised guidelines. And so the next step is if it's approved today, between now and when in December, we would go ahead and try to implement or get it all worked out to implement this procedures of somebody coming in, producing a report, go out of the application and effectively become operational January twenty twenty-five. And move forward with that. With all of that, I mean, questions?
Questions, Commissioner Hendricks?
What happens with the projects that are already in the works right now?
That's a good question. It would fall under the current adopted guidelines. So I suppose if they've already submitted, then it would be under the, the guidelines of two thousand and eighteen. If they haven't submitted yet, when they do, it would fall into the guidelines if they're adopted today.
Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Keller.
Going on the same, same thought process that Commissioner Hendricks had on remodels on these existing things, they're going to be brought into the new code?
I think all remodels do have to be brought up to code.
Or new, new, under the new classification and is there separate classifications on? Like you're going by APN numbers? Is each APN classification or can it be split across the APN number?
Well, I would say this is for developing the new structures. So if you were to come in and build an accessory structure on the APN, it might trigger something.
Or, or is there a distance away from certain things? So like if I was going to add onto a house and I'm, I'm coming closer to the creek bed, then that might influence on how, whether or not I could on an existing structure expand.
And given this, the modeling effort will show you what improvements need to be done. I mean, it's not saying can't put your addition there, it's just saying what other improvements need to be done so we can effectively, you know, situate your addition in the structure.
Normally, I would think you would raise the elevation, but that, but it's kind of it's not practical if that building, the major set of the buildings has a certain height, your, that main part of the house is still going to get flooded. Right? So I didn't know if that, how we address that.
There's other there you, the code gives you the ability of other flooding requirements. Free board requirements, right? So we can go in with Florida from the God's help takes into consideration, taking some units, those have to be elevated above the flow depths, they're protected. Inheriting any sort of design faults.
Yeah, the FEMA flood standards would still apply even regardless of this. So whatever they're zoned for, there are standards for, for zoning that a shady back.
Commissioner Jacobson, anything? Commissioner Hendricks?
With all the development we have going, why would we wait? And we have all the information. Why wait till January to implement it?
It's going to take a little bit of effort to train out either county staff or have others do it to implement. So it's going to take a little, little bit of time to make that happen. And so yeah, I mean, maybe make it happen sooner, but.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we just give us some timeline. Obviously, the hundred dollar, the tier one, that decent, the county staff built by a counter. As the single family projects come in, it's one of the projects and having to take just some additional training. Obviously, if there's questions, editorial changes today, does that time to implement those, whether application or guidelines or anything like that, just give us a month. Actually go for it. And it gives other developers, you know, a chance, you've seen it today. Adopted today, but also gives them time where be familiarized with those guidelines and change that. If I can go back and answer Commissioner Keller's question, they'll start outside of this area, area, designated areas. I mean, they wouldn't follow.
Thank you. It'd be tough to make somebody have on addition to their family room six inches higher than the rest of the family room. So I'm pretty sure we would kind of consider that, but it's definitely a good question.
We, we did run across that just recently and we didn't, people didn't buy the property because they couldn't expand. So.
So. Anything further? It is an action item. Any public, okay, we'll let the county manager talk.
And if I can just clarify that situation, those were already FEMA standards that we have. That, that's outside of the period range master plan.
I already did one on a bad same type of thing. Reflected on this, that's all.
Yeah, and I think the intent of this is to figure out what type of because it's not necessarily that it would have to be raised, right? They might have to build some kind of structure or flood structure around it. So there's different options.
Thank you. Yeah, and it's just good to explore the options so that we have some answers for people. Or I'd say, well, hey, we'll get back with you. So bringing stuff up like this is, I think, pretty significant for our, our customers. Okay? Yes. Public comment? Yes.
Yeah, I have no objection.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, Dan Birchfield, for the record, I've already kind of talked to these guys about my public comments. I'm a civil engineer, represents several of the land development projects in the region. And I'm generally in favor of the proposed changes to the drainage guidelines and certainly the intent that they have. Just some of the specifics, I have some concerns with. So in here, it talks about, you know, larger projects, which, which I'm involved in. The applicant would need to provide data prepared within the modeling software that was used in the specific ADMP. And then that flow chart also, you know, talks about the applicant is required to, may be required to utilize fluid to need to perform post-development hydraulic, hydrologic calculations. So my, my issues with just that specific modeling software is the, the newer version, the one that was utilized for this project is not currently accepted by FEMA in this region. It's only accepted in a few counties in Arizona. It's not accepted anywhere in the country for modeling the hydrology, the flow, and it's not, except for in those counties in Arizona, and it's not accepted. Some of the older versions are accepted for hydraulic modeling, you know, kind of the flow spread stuff that you've seen. But not accepted in Nevada or anywhere else in the country other than Arizona. And so I just, I don't want to be held to utilizing for, for my projects like a substandard product. Modeling product. I want to be able to use like just, so if the county is willing to accept just the FEMA has a published list of acceptable modeling programs, I, I think that they should allow use of all of those, you know, essentially treat it just like you would a FEMA project, except it doesn't go to FEMA. I'm, I'm really in favor of that. I don't like going FEMA. But I, I think that if they just treat them all that way, that would help solve it. And then I also I'm in favor of, of the county providing you know, what they think are the flows coming into a project, as long as I'm available, able to verify that those are accurate, given that you know, you can't always trust this modeling program to develop the flows. And also given that I'm allowed to model what's going on with my proposed project, I, I can't just hand it off to the county to, to determine you know, if my proposed project's going to work because there's a lot of iterations with grading and utilities and, and all the things that go into a project. And I need to be able to control the, the hydraulics and then, and then give that back to the county in a form that, that would be acceptable. So, so again, I'm in favor of Um, so, so again, I'm in favor of the changes and the intent of them giving us what they think the flows are coming into the site. I just need, need to be able to, uh, to utilize that in the, in, in this one.
Thank you, sir.
Do I need to sign that?
Please sign it. Any other public comments?
Could we hear Fuller's response to that?
Just public comment, I guess he could if he wanted to, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Want to.
I, I can address some of that.
If, if you want, because normally public comments, we're not required to make any, but it is a project and a, a plan. So, yeah.
We have some. Chairman, could, could I ask a quick question? Maybe you can do both at the same time. Okay. So what I wanted to know is how we, how we handle the difference between the engineers from in the past, we've had one engineer say this, and then this county engineer says this, and then we get the paperwork going back and forth and nothing but complaints about the cost and the length of the project, if you guys can kind of speak on that too.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. In fact, I remember one discussion I had with one engineer. Uh, got kind of heated because we didn't see eye to eye on how they would model some of the flows and how they were coming up with their fill rates. Um, but yeah, yeah, the, the point is we're trying to create a standard where everybody knows and we can say, okay, here's the flow that we've modeled. This is what's coming. This is what we believe to be the existing condition. Yeah, there are other softwares, HACRAS, others that can, can do this. Um, and maybe we'll have Jay Fuller might come up and talk about uh, why this is a great model. Um, but we, we, we provide the information to the, the designer, the engineer. And then they take that information and still have to provide us back all of their calculations, all of their, uh, site-specific, all their retention, everything that meets the guidelines. And they still have to provide it back so they can use whatever software. I, I would, I would point out that, uh, at least on our application, we don't have it up here anymore, but would you say, uh, on the application? You know, we do say that, you know, flow to the post development hydrology calculations or other applicable software. And so we recognize that there are other applicable softwares out there to model this. And we will do that more the flow to D is because we have an area drainage master plan and we've adopted this flow to the model that we want to provide, have the information provided to us, we'll put it into the flow to the model and then we'll remodel it. And the, the intent is not really to become onerous for developers or anybody, but it's more to just create a, a standard. And maybe Mike, maybe if you have a moment to talk about that, um, but yeah, the, the, the point is that yeah, we could reword some of this, maybe a little bit more to make it a little clearer that we would accept other applications of, of of flow, but we need to have a baseline to start off with. And we provide information to the, the developers and.
Mike Kellogg with J E Fuller for the record. Um, I guess to the first, uh, issue with FEMA approval, so, um, FEMA is moving away from, uh, official models, uh, official model list. In fact, you can't even find that list on their website anymore. They're moving towards local jurisdictions deciding which models are applicable to their community. Um, if Lyon County wanted to get, uh, a FEMA, uh, approval for flow to D in the latest version, it's a one-page letter request. And then the county would, would receive a, a letter from FEMA that says you're allowed to use flow to D for FEMA studies. So, so it's very simple to do that if the county wanted to, to do that process. Um, but like I said, FEMA is moving away from that altogether. Uh, another point to make is that those FEMA standards apply to areas that have FEMA regulatory flood planes on them. So areas like, um, stagecoach, for example, where there are no FEMA flood planes, that FEMA requirement isn't required. It's the county's, um, uh, um, decision on what models are approved. So, um, so that, and then I think the way that we envision this information is is we use flow to D because it had specific capabilities to model alluvial fans that other software didn't have. And it was really important for us to account for that appropriately. Um, other models like H C RAS might have those capabilities in the future, but, but it just doesn't at this time. But, um, as, um, as Chuck mentioned, the way I guess we envisioned this would go, and, and I'm not going to speak for the county and how they're going to use this, but vision that we had was we could, the county could provide that information to a developer, a developer engineer, and then they would use that as inflows into their own model that they would use to, for their development, and then they would provide those results to the county to say, yep, we are following the standards and, and here are the results. But the actual hydrology and hydraulics coming into their site would be provided through the ADMP models, and then they could use whatever model follows, you know, that would fall within the county standards and guidelines. So um, I think that, that answers everything that I recall.
Good.
Yep. Thank you.
Anything further? To answer your questions, Commissioner Keller? I know that it's a conservative situation here of saying, you know, we got to build higher elevation. I always look at, um, you know, the structures that I've built, garages and things such as that according to plans. I'd always say that being conservative and going higher than you might need to go might cost a little bit more now, but when your home's flooded or your garage is flooded, you're kind of looking at a lot more expense, uh, drywall, rot, carpet. So going a little higher, I think that's what we're discussing here. Um, a little bit more money at the beginning, but it saves a lot more money all the way through with having a, a conservative plan. That's why I kind of like this plan. Okay. Um, so we've had our public comment. I'm just looking for a uh, a motion on this one.
Mister, Mister Chair, I, I moved that we adopt the amended two thousand eighteen drainage guidelines for Lyon County, including new requirements for projects within area design master plan designated areas.
Area drainage?
Yeah.
Okay, area drainage master plan.
Second.
All right. So we have, uh, motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, we're going to take a break.
I have a quick question, maybe for the.
Quick question from Commissioner Keller.
We just approved a two thousand, amended two thousand eighteen drainage guideline. And on our book, it says two thousand fourteen amendments, I mean, two, twenty twenty four amendments. They're revised.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure you got the dates right. That's all.
Okay, um, you wanted to address this some more. I was going to say we'll take a break here for.
Okay. A lot of information.
You got it. Okay. Uh, I figure it's, uh, let's take a break until ten twenty-five. That'll give us about eight minutes. Reconvene, it's ten twenty-five. And the next item is a time certain in ten AM for a presentation only. Presentation given by Matt Martinson with Weed Heights Development LLC for possible grants submitted to the Community Development Block Grant for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Aaron Lopez, Grant Administrator, just to give a quick introduction, Matt Martinson is going to give you some overview of the project that he's been helping.
Like to start by thanking Lyon County Board of County Commissioners through the chair. My name's Matt Martinson. For the record, I'm here today representing Weed Heights Development. And I'm here hopefully today to, to gain your support in moving forward with the CDBG project for twenty twenty-five. Um, want to let's explain kind of what it is. So we're trying to create a shovel-ready project, so we can then move forward to seek funding through, um, State Revolving Fund Office of Financial Assistance. So the application submitted to CDBG is seeking funding for the purpose, yeah, of the engineering and design of replacement of the Weed Heights Development Public Water System Distribution System. So over this past year, we were able to successfully have funded in a with SRF and ourselves, uh, preliminary engineering report to evaluate the existing infrastructure currently serving the Weed Heights Development and identify specific water projects to bring the water system into compliance with state and federal regulations. So what we're asking CDBG for, or for your blessing to move forward to full application with CDBG is to fund engineering and design. The cost estimate currently is at eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. And that will enable us to have a shovel-ready pro, or project to move forward to seek additional funding through other alternative state revolving fund is where we're hoping to go to. Um, we were told by them that, uh, we, they wouldn't be available for our project until possibly fall of twenty twenty-five. So we were trying to get, get ourselves ready and be in place to do so. And that's basically in a nutshell, down and dirty this project. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I will go on further to just add a little information. We've been doing our, our damnedest to, uh, bring this system into the twenty-first century. We've, uh, we've had, so since twenty eighteen, we've spent two point six million out of our own pockets to bring system upgrades into place of well replacement, um, scatter, full controls throughout the whole system. Uh, rehabilitation of a booster facility, and we just finished the project that was rehabbing all of our existing storage tanks. So there's four tanks on the site. We had a one point five million project with SRF that was six, successful and just completed here this last summer. And so, yeah, we're just trying to, uh, continue moving on. There's some issues with the system. And we're, we're doing our best to, to remedy it. So, but we need some help.
Questions?
Yeah. How big is the system? How many?
System is comprised of three hundred and three connections.
Quite a bit.
And I'll, I'll also add that, so this, this small community, I'm sure everyone's aware of it in this room, that, uh, Weed Heights Development is a, a small community that, uh, is primarily comprised of low to moderate income and, uh, section eight housing.
Questions, Commissioner? Questions?
I was just hoping just some of the money would go to the roads, but.
Well, that would be a portion of this project. So with, with doing the full replacement of the distribution system that resides inside the road paths, um, it would be necessary to then restructure the, the pavement and such in all areas.
I have another question.
Oh, another question, Commissioner Keller?
And maybe this one might be, i- is this a going to be competitive with the other ones that we're looking at? How's this working? And this is just for presentation, so we're not doing support or anything right now.
Right. So I just wanted to go over that part of it with you also. So Matt has one, um, for fire hydrants?
Yes, for Silver Springs.
Yeah, for Silver Springs, and he's also helping support their application. Um, so we can have to move forward for your approval to the, um, CDBD grants and then two of our own. And, but as today, we only have two. So these are the two applications that we have currently. So it's really up to you if you want to support it. The other point is, is that they both have to pass eligibility. And whatever does pass eligibility will then come to you for approval before they even submit their final application. So it's really what we're doing today is just giving you an overview of what we're working on and then whatever passes can bring back to you other day.
Andrew Haskin, county manager, just to, um, add some clarification to that, so that all of the grants will be competitive against each other, against other counties as well. So I think that's what.
I, I was kind of going as far as what we, we're putting forward, because I know like the airport sometimes brings someone forward, the other people bring them forward. And so at one point, we're going to kind of rank them all and see which one. So, yes.
Anything further? Yeah, and if we could connect sometime, I'd, I'd like to check out what, exactly what you're looking at for improvement, since this is my district up there, but I, this is kind of the first I've heard about it here, so I.
So, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. You're just finalizing the preliminary engineering report. We're just, uh, yeah, going through the draft. We should have the final copy here probably in the next month that we would be able to provide you with, so you see exactly what the entire project is.
Yeah, you just give me a call sometime and we'll.
You got it.
Take a, take a trip up there and look around and see what, yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are moving on to eight.
Uh, 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 sorry, on this item, um, we do have to do public participation, even though it is presentation only.
Hmm, okay. All right, public participation. Seeing none, we'll move on to eight. All right. Commissioners, County Manager Reports. Let's, uh, start with Commissioner Hendricks.
I attended the webinar on the new top-down voting system that's being implemented by the Secretary of State and wasn't terribly impressed with that. Uh, we elect our county clerk for a reason. And we weren't even, they muted everyone. We weren't even able to make comments or ask questions. Um, attended the Silver Springs Advisory Board Meeting, the Planning Commission Meeting, the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District Meeting and the Stagecoach Drainage Plan Public Meeting.
Commissioner Harrison?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Not much to report. I too attended the Planning Commission Meeting. And also the, uh, campo meeting where they, um, updated the, I forget what it's called. The, um, but amendment to the contract for the, uh, second phase of complete, complete streets. Uh, East, East fifty Carson Complete Street Study, and they have extended the study area. It was going to stop uh, pretty much in, in, uh, mound house. Now they've extended it all the way out to three forty-one, which is the turnoff to Virginia City. And then hopefully, uh, phase three of that will be from four thirty-one out to, um, Chabs Road. But that'd be years down the road.
Okay. Uh, what if Commissioner Keller?
I do attended the webinar on the voting machine, the voting stuff. I agree with, uh, Commissioner Hendricks on that one. I'm not real happy with what was going forward with that. Uh, I attended the Lyon County Planning Commission. I attended the NACO Rural Action Caucus. And, uh, one of the big takeaways from that is that on the farm bill that's going through, I believe there's a they did, they gave us an overview of the farm bill, which is a major piece of legislation that covers a wide range of issues such as conservation, agriculture and nutrition programs, rural development and more. The last farm bill passed in two thousand eighteen, and it was supposed to be reauthorized, but, uh, it expired on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So working on a new one. In May, the House Agriculture Committee released the Farm Flood and National Security Act of twenty twenty-four. The Senate Agriculture Committee majority released a framework, but did not issue any bill text. Later, the Senate Minority later released a doing framework. Regardless, there's not going to be any, it doesn't look like there's going to be full authorization of the farm bill until twenty twenty-five. So there's a lot of programs within that that we kind of look for funding and stuff, so we'll keep an eye on that. I know that, uh, also on NACO that they're talking about on our rural areas, both sides of, uh, the legislation, the, the Democrats and the Republicans are looking to approve higher weight limits on trucks going on vehicle, on, uh, roadways. And by increasing that weight limit, it's going to do a little bit more to our rural areas as far as our roads. And both sides are pushing it forward, so we, hopefully we can get some revenue or some source of revenue to to help us out, because it's going to eat up our roads faster. I also attended the Fallon Range Intergovernmental in, intergovernmental executive committee, and that was mostly updates of how they're realigning the highway, going up to gaps and and, uh, helping out the farmers about their grazing rights. And, and I, I like the process they're going through on that. I also attended the Fernley City Council last night. And that's it.
Uh, Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Um, uh, attended the Fernley.
Uh, attended the Fernley nine eleven ceremony. Um. It's uh, I believe the Fernley nine eleven ceremony is the only one that's been continuous throughout the entire state, which is sad. Um. And uh so my hats off to that committee. Um, wanna give a shout out to Commissioner Hockaday for being there and Ms. Allison. It was nice to see you there as well, representing the county. Thank you for that. Um, tended to Assemblyman Panel in Fernley. Uh, Nick Vander Kellen did a great job of of emceeing that event. Um, and and guiding uh questions and also answering um questions from from uh from his position. A great big shout out to Assemblymen, Assem- Assemblymen, uh Koenig, Halfen, Urick and Ger for being there. They did a nice job of outline outlining uh concerns uh throughout the state. Um. Everything from gerrymandering, uh touched on um solar, um funding for different stuff. So it was, they did a, they did a wonderful job and it was great to have them in Fernley. Was able to bring a group of uh Fernley High School students to both of those presentations. Um. And uh we need to continue keeping our youth in the in uh the government loop um and encouraging them um from both sides. Um. Tended the Drainage Master Plan once in uh Silver Springs regarding this Stagecoach uh Drainage Master Plan. Uh, again, there's thirty-five, forty people there. Uh, Mr. Kellogg and his associate did a great job. Um, I wanna also draw attention to Mr. Carriola and Mr. Henderson. Um, they were there answering a plethora of questions, going through maps. Putting people at ease and answer answering questions to their the very best of their abilities. They came very well prepared and I was impressed by that. Um, just finished up teaching a Hunter's Head class. Jesse Waller and I do that once, twice a year. Uh, enjoy being a volunteer for the Nevada Department of Wildlife, keeping these kids um and young adults going and getting them going uh to preserve. Hunting rights and and uh outdoor activities in the state. I wanna wish them well. Um, in in their upcoming endeavors in the field. Um, and uh that is all I have for now. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Yeah, I'll take a deep breath here. Um. Started off with a Zoom meeting, presentation coordination with the pool pack for my trip to Elko. I had a couple of agenda review meetings, uh Smith Valley's um Advisory Board. Uh, then of course I was missing this meeting, um the commission meeting on the fifth uh cause I drove to Elko for my presentation. Uh, presentation, a question come up, but you know, why, why did I go? We have the medical for our jail and um it works good for us. Uh, since the jail is anywhere from fifty to seventy percent of the county's liability, it's good to have medical staff there for the majority of the day and uh kind of keep us out of trouble. Uh, they do a great job over there and uh I think the uh the sheriff deputies over there in the jail do appreciate their presence, um, cause I know giving out meds and stuff back in the day, not a real a real great activity for uh young deputies to be doing. Um, attended the Walker River Irrigation District Meeting. They discussed water irrigation and the um topaz and it's water available in the in the reservoir for our farmers to irrigate, how much is left for the year. Dressler Park Meeting. Nine eleven ceremony. I have to admit, it's a probably one of the best ceremonies that I've really ever attended. Um, for those who haven't made it up there on nine eleven, I would highly recommend that you go up and uh see it's got an hour and ten minutes. Very well done, excellent presentation. I do appreciate Commissioner Jacobson bringing students over to be involved in that. Plus, there were some other classes, I think, that came over and uh keep the kids understanding all of those points about nine eleven. Um, Mason Valley Citizen Group came in and talked about the cemetery and weed control and things such as that, which brings me to another announcement that uh this Saturday, the twenty-first, uh there'll be a citizen group cleaning up our cemetery in Smith Valley, Hillcrest. So if you want to come up there and help out at nine in the morning, bring your shovel, weed whacker, whatever else you need to bring to make sure the cemetery looks fantastic for uh the residents and those who go up to visit the residents. Mason Valley Conservation Meeting and Smith Valley Conservation Meeting. And then yesterday, we had the US Department of Agriculture show up here in Earrington for a uh presentation on cultivating outdoor recreational economies. Um, they had several representatives from the federal government that came in and talked to us about all the money they're giving us and how we can create a recreational economy to help out Lyon County and um how they're all helping us directly from the administration to do all of that for our county. Basically, the grants we get every year. So uh we will continue looking into opportunities to increase our economy through outdoor recreation. And uh they had Ely come over, they had the representative from Ely come over and talk about how they've improved their area through recreation and that uh they've they've done quite a quite a good job and they're trying to bring people back into their community who all left when, you know, the copper mine and all that kind of closed down. So it was, it was pretty interesting from the locals. Uh, the feds, meh, you know, I don't get too much from them usually, but uh the local people from the other rural counties that discuss their issues about Walker, Walker Lake and Pyramid Lake. Yeah, things such as that. This is very, very interesting what the counties are doing for their own selves to improve their economies. So that's about it. We'll go on to the uh County Manager's Report.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. Um, I'll keep my comments brief. I've been super busy um the last few weeks. Well, but I did want to note that uh I had a meeting this week with the US Commercial Service with the Department of Commerce. Uh, it was a good meeting. They um to provide some information on um how they help businesses. Both looking to make connections with foreign companies for invest for selling their products in foreign countries, but also um working with um trying to make connections for buying products from the country. So it was pretty interesting. They have got a lot of a lot of resources for businesses. So that was really good. Um, I wanted to remind everybody about the um NACO Conference next week for those of you that signed up. And then the last thing I have, I received a letter from the Governor's Office of Economic Development for um that a Lyon County company has applied for um incentives, um tax abatements as a part of their location to to Lyon County. Uh, but so you may have heard that uh company purchased the old industrial building in Wabaska. Uh, they're looking to move uh part of their their company here. And so uh they have applied for tax payments as a part of that. Um, I will be submitting, so we're required to submit a letter of acknowledgement to the Governor's Office. So I will be submitting that. It's not a letter of support or anything like that. It's just we have to say that we received the letter. We acknowledge that we received the letter. So I'll be submitting that. There will be a hearing on October third, twenty twenty-four at two o'clock. That uh actually, I, you know, this is a building that's been empty for a while, so I think this is probably a good thing. Um, I've I I would rather get a small percentage of something rather than a hundred percent. Anyway, uh, that is my report.
Yeah, Commissioner Keller.
Are they doing that Brownsville thing out there at that building? Because there's a lot of cleanup, I would imagine. I've toured that building before and it's it's not pretty.
Um, I don't know. I I'm not sure. I'm I'm not sure.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Moving on, elected official reports. Sheriff is, oh, go ahead, oh.
I am not an elected official. However, um, the clerk treasurer's office did ask me to make a note of the um when it was included in the board packet of the election uh polling locations
Right.
for the upcoming general election. So um early voting will begin on October nineteenth. Um, and there are several locations, the dates and times when those polling locations will be available are in that packet. But I did want to note, there will be early voting locations of the Earrington Paiute Tribe, uh the Fernley City Hall, the Dayton Utilities Building and uh Silver Springs Senior Center Community. Um, for early voting locations. In addition, there will be polling play uh there will be drop-off locations, bout drop-off locations at the Fernley City Hall and at the Earrington Paiute Tribe Smoke Shop. And the Fernley City Hall location will be open on October eleventh or fourth. So coming up quick, I wanted to make that note. Um, on Election Day, there will be polling locations at Earrington City Hall, Smith Valley Library, Fernley City Hall, the Silver Springs um Senior Center, Community Center, Dayton Valley or the Dayton High School Gym and the Earrington.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
Lyon County Sheriff, I pulled for the record. Thanks for cutting me off, Andrew. Uh, just for a report, we were scheduled to do a saturation control last night, but due to weather, we canceled it driving home. Uh, from an event, traffic was light, so it was a right call. We've been looking at ways of making our saturation controls a lot more efficient uh on overtime and uh just our budget in general. So what we've decided to do is use our Special Investigations Unit um as a regular shift. Uh, they do have a K nine, two detectives. To make traffic stops regularly. So we've decided to use those guys on a regular shift uh in conjunction with our STET team uh to make those a lot more efficient on overtime and include command staff that's on salary. Trying to save our budget. The last year when we were operating saturation patrols, we had uh more than a dozen vacant positions. So we had a lot of that salary budget to play with and uh that's not the case now, which leads me to my next point. Uh, our hiring is going well. Right now, we have four open positions. We have one deputy scheduled to depart us uh at the end of the month and possibly two more. Um, however, I have four category one certified peace officers uh in the background process. I have two category three peace officers in the background process. Total of six, and then I have six uh non-certified people in the background process with eleven more showing up to test. So so uh the open positions are spoken for. Uh, we have five in the academy that are doing really well, scheduled to graduate in November. Uh, if we can get them out on the street in conjunction with the category one officers that we're we're swearing in and hiring recently, we're looking at adding another eleven category one sworn officers to the street by mid-November. So uh that'll be one as far as schedule. We do have to send five more to the academy in January, but uh those guys, they have their replacements are already already scheduled. So I had a sidebar with uh Commissioner Keller about recruiting. Her recruitment is going well. Uh, three of those category one officers we picked up at the National Guard Job Fair. They are part of the guard. They were category one certified with with no home. So we found a home for them. They're doing well. We do have other category one officers uh from other agencies that are scheduled right along uh with our department to kind of see where we're at, what we're doing, what the difference between our department and their department is. And uh them just showing that interest, seeing the differences in the departments, I think we'll pick those guys up too if we have space. But uh since I started with the Lyon County Sheriff's Office, we've been full one time and it was for a total of four days. So if we can hit that mark and last longer than the four days, I'll be impressed. But uh you know, we're looking forward to it. And so and we're working hard towards it. We're gonna stay aggressive with our recruitment and our hiring. Uh, other than that, uh attended the nine eleven ceremony, uh Fernley, great ceremony. They honored the fallen well. Also attended the meet and greet where Commissioner Jacobson was, attended the uh candidate's night at the Calvary Chapel Church last night. Might see some stuff on Facebook about that. But uh, but that's going well. Department's moving in the right direction. We have a lot of community events coming up. It's as a season. Uh, we're starting our fundraising events for shop with the sheriff. Our fundraising goal is right around twelve thousand dollars, so we can get the uh the forty kids of Christmas. So ramping that up and uh we're just rolling.
Okay, Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockday. I was just gonna thank you and Brant, Mr. Brandingham for being at the nine eleven. It was nice to see you guys and um you're always very visible at those events. Um, and then did I, did I s- see the uh canine cruising around Fernley High School parking lot?
Probably.
Yeah. I like that. Good job.
Got that dog specifically for school, so. Let it work.
Run him through every chance you get.
The good thing is, is that dog has not found a gun uh or narcotics yet. Uh, the dog's well-trained, so it's a good thing that they haven't found her.
I don't know if this should be shared or not, but apparently the canine picked up on a kid had a few twenty-two bullets in the side pocket of his truck, which probably ninety percent of us do, but but it picked up on just a few twenty-two bullets.
Uh, that's awesome.
Yeah, so it's not, if it's not because they're missing the guns, the guns aren't there because if they're picking up a tw- couple twenty-two bullets, that's impressive.
I agree.
Anything further? A couple of comments from me. Um, I appreciate you, you know, jumping in a patrol car and heading over there to Smith Valley to check on the what I'm calling now Wellington Cut Off Interstate. Um, we have a significant number of vehicles and you and I have talked about that and the number of citations that you wrote. Um, I don't know if you're uh aware of the information on this, but with this civil infraction, twenty-five dollar fine, are there significant court costs added to that civil or is the court even involved anymore on this?
They're involved, but no, the the cost is not.
Just.
Maybe I, I uh pulled a lady over for tailgating me and road rage and all kinds. So since my vehicle's unmarked, it's an easy target, but uh she was tailgating too close, doing fifteen over Mount House, giving me the bird and uh I get tickets only three hundred and forty bucks, so.
Ah, okay.
You know, that that's uh one of the problems is we can only operate within those guidelines, so uh yeah, unfortunately, it's not hitting their pocketbooks too hard.
Did she?
Sorry. Said I didn't know you were a cop.
Yeah, imagine that.
I have to hear all the complaints about the traffic and flipping me off some of the things. She was from Pittsburgh and I'm a Steelers fan. Kind of broke my heart.
Oh. Yeah.
She got one.
Yeah, that's, I appreciate that. Thank you. That's uh brightens our day on that one. Okay. Anything further? All right, thank you, sir. All right, uh, geez, were any other elected official? If not, we'll move on to um the ninety part of early voting. We've already got that from
Yep, yes.
County Andrew, yep, from County Manager. Uh, appointed official reports. You appointed officials want to talk? Ms. Taylor.
Quickly, um, Taylor Allison, Lyon County Emergency Manager. I just wanted the community to be aware. We received very short notice of um the end-up closure on ninety-five A this weekend from midnight on Saturday through four AM on Monday morning. So please it's frustrating for everyone, but seek alternate routes where you can.
Isn't there a closure right after that through Mason and?
Ninety, yeah.
Yes, so three thirty-nine will have late controls for several weeks, I believe, through November.
Through November.
And with the closure on the California side, on three ninety-five south and flagging between Silver Springs and Fallon. We're kind of isolated, so. The more we can work with our state and federal partners, the better. And leans into what we've been voicing for the last several months. Please work with us, especially on the emergency services side, so we can continue, um, public safety operations, but. We're working on it and, um, help get the word out to the community, especially for this weekend. That closure will be a big deal.
Now, the, um. Closure that we have because of the wildlife crossings on three ninety-five, we got an update on that. I mean, I think it was supposed to be finished tomorrow. And they are never on time, so they'll still be rolling through three thirty-eight. Eight twenty-nine, two oh eight. So.
I do not have an update from Caltrans, but I can look into it for you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, advisory board reports. Oh, oh, good. Well, another one?
Aaron Lopez for the record, um, I just wanted to give you guys an update. I sent out to the advisory boards and several other boards, um, their. Expiring terms for their members for the year and then also asked them to advertise it on their agendas until the end of the year. We put it in the newspaper and it's also on our website. Um, what I wanted to do was have them, the applications due to our office by November fifteenth. That way we can have them on the. Second agenda in November. And that will give them the required time for you, for them to do their training, their online training before they start. In January, and then if there are any other boards that have some vacancies, we will start that. Advertisement again to, from December into January and then do a second role. Just taking consideration from your feedback from last year. So if you would like to give me any other direction, we can agendize that, but I just kind of wanted to give you an update of my plan.
Any questions on that? All right. Thank you. Now move to eleven. Any advisory board reports? See anybody on Zoom? Nobody's jumping up here. Okay, then let's move down to twelve consent agenda. We have twelve A through twelve J. Any commissioner? Comments, inputs, removals, discussions? No, public? Any public input or? Comments on this? No? Then we'll look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Chairman Hockley, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda twelve A through twelve J.
Of the second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We'll move on to. The next page, item thirteen. For. Regular agenda, human services for possible action, approve a contract. Between Lion County and American Eagle Property Management for four thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars to provide handyman services to individuals with the senior services case management program.
Good morning. We're still in the morning. Uh, Dr. Shala Holmes, Director, Lion County Human Services for the record. This is a contract for services for our handyman grant. We anticipate there being about four more of these coming in front of you guys. You approved. A few last meeting and hopefully you'll re- approve the remaining of the next meeting, but we're bringing them to you as we get them signed.
Okay. Any questions? No questions. Thank you. Any public input? Seeing none. Move on with a motion to, uh, approve this contract.
Move to approve a contract between Lion County and American Eagle Property Management for four thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars. To provide handyman services to individuals within the senior services case management program.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Moving on to item fourteen, County Manager, Fern Center. Item fourteen A for possible action, approve a boundary line adjustment grant, bargain, sale deed, and relinquishment of easement and easement deed. And the associated record of survey regarding panel. Parcels, sorry, parcels zero two one dash one zero three dash forty-seven and zero two one dash one oh three dash fifty. Owned by Lion County within the city of Fernley.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager brought my stack of papers here to camp out for a little bit. So, uh. Fourteen A, uh, this is a boundary line adjustment between two parcels that we own in Fernley, um, as we were getting ready to do all the construction documents for the, um. Expansion of the Fernley Justice Courtroom. We realized that part of the building was actually built on the adjacent parcel. Not really sure how that happened originally, but we, this is how to fix that so that, uh. We can move forward with that project. So, um, that's what the boundary line adjustment is. Happy to answer any question.
Questions? How did we miss that? Yeah. Okay. All right. Any public input on this one? Seeing none.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion to approve boundary line adjustment, uh, grant bargain, sale deed, relinquish, uh, relinqu- relinquishment. Excuse me, of easement, easement deed, uh, and the associated record of survey regarding parcels zero two one hyphen one zero three dash zero four, or four seven. And zero two one, uh, hyphen one zero three hyphen five zero owned, uh, by Lion County within the city of Fernley.
Grab a second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And we're at fourteen B. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sitting here reading it to myself. Presentation only. Presentation on the comment letter submitted to the Bi-State Sage Grouse Working Group regarding the draft two thousand twenty-four Bi-State Sage Grouse Action Plan.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. I'm actually gonna have Jeremy Drew, uh, who's on Zoom, um, do most of this presentation, but I just wanted to let the board know I actually already. Submitted this comment letter. It was due before I could get it on. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. For your record, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist with Resource Concepts. Um, just to step through the, the letter quickly, and I think we discussed this in an update a couple of months ago. Um, but the Bi-State, uh, local area working group was working on a draft. Uh, update to the Bi-State Sage Grouse Action Plan. Um, for the most part, I think, uh, it was really positive. Um, and timely to update the plan. Um, previous plans have gone a long ways. Uh, in implementing projects and partnerships that I think thus far have kept the Bi-State off of, uh, the Endangered Species Act, and so. Um, the hope is that the updated plan will continue to do that. Um, so just stepping through some of the main points of the plan, uh, we were able to both review the plan and attend one of the local, um, area working groups of the PMU meeting. Uh, held in Smith Valley that was specific to the Pine Nut and Desert Creek as well as fails. Um, population units, but they went, they kind of opened it up to comments on the whole plan. Um, we did cite our previous opposition to listing under ESA and attached that, uh, just kind of for their record. Um, one of the main themes, I think, in reviewing the action plan, um, that concerned me just a little bit was there was kind of a general lack of detailed mapping in the plan. Um, there's some really good general, um, by statewide or PMU wide maps. Um, but there wasn't a lot of documentation in terms of how priority mapping has changed over the years. Um, as developed by the Bi-State Group or even, um, some of the proposed, uh, areas of critical habitat in previous. ESA listings, and so we made a, a host of recommendations. Um, and suggested maybe even a, an appendix, uh, that talked about those maps, and so we don't lose kind of the evolution of how that has changed over time. Um, we talked about, uh, our support of, um, a lot of the active restoration projects that have gone on and suggested. You know, future projects be continued and coordinated with our local, uh, stakeholders, landowners and waterite holders. Um, and then we talked a little bit about, um, even using the plan to capture some of the work that has been done. Um, and maybe even some repeat photography for how, uh, some of those key habitats have changed over time. Um, whether through just general succession and how the landscape has changed or through some of the active, um, projects that have been completed. And then we had several pages of doc, kind of what I call document-specific. Um, comments, uh, and I wasn't necessarily gonna step through all those since you have it, um, in front of you on the table. But I'm more than happy to answer any questions you all may have. Um, again, they plan on developing a final, um, plan here in the coming months, and I look forward to, to seeing that as well.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, uh, Chairman Hockaday. Uh, good morning, Mr. Drew. Assume you're getting out this weekend, maybe? In reading this report, um, under the predation, um. The generalist predators, I believe they're called in here, aren't really causing, uh, much of an issue. Um, however. Uh, raven, uh, predation and, and damage possibly to the nesting and the end chicks, um. Seem to be a problem with the. Um, I believe ravens are still protected, um. Crows not so much, uh, what, what? What are some plans to? Help ease the predation of ravens on the sage grouse?
Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner. Um, so a recent development, uh, is that, um, the Wildlife Services. Arm of the USDA actually increased their take permit for ravens. Um, in the state of Nevada, so I think previously, um, it was limited to like five thousand ravens for purposes of quote, resource protection across the entire state. Um, I believe that number went up to nineteen thousand, if memory serves me right. Um, so while that's statewide, it would allow additional take, including the Bi-State area. Specific to our comments, um, there was some discussion on predation and in several areas that was listed as a high threat factor. One of the comments that we made is some of those populations were listed as, um, a small population being a threat because of. Uh, lack of genetic genetics, uh, diversity and connectivity and things of that. So one of the things that we mentioned is anywhere where you have a small population. Predation should also be a high risk factor, just because it's suppressing those smaller populations. And so. Um, I hope, uh, that would they continue with the predator management, especially, especially around the ravens and maybe even expand it. Uh, with the way that new permit has been expanded. The good news on the Bi-State is there's a lot of data and a lot of information from USGS. In terms of raven depredation and where that's occurring, and so I think they have the data, um, to justify where that may, that sort of work may need to happen.
Thank you.
Anything further? I had, I had this in big letters, ravens. We don't seem to, uh, get too concerned about the critters that are killing the. Killing the sage grouse, um. And they do devastate. The population, um. I know they are out cutting pinyon pine, pinyon juniper. To eliminate their vantage point to see these nesting areas. Uh, there was a comment in here that, that kind of, um, hit me when you, you said that, um, the. Chart, uh, table three, I should say, on page sixteen was, um, was good. I thought it was pretty lousy, to tell you the truth. Uh, it's kind of the only difference I had. A lot of, you had the question of what does the, the dash mark mean? I'm looking at these numbers and saying. You know, they, a dash mark means there, there weren't any. You're right. There's, there's no explanation. They didn't find any. They, they were zero population. They covered the whole area. They, you know, covered thousand acres and didn't find any. Um, twenty-eleven through twenty-fifteen. Was that? Forty-one every year? Same population, so it, that, that chart. And to me, basically could be just pulled out of there. It's kind of worthless. And, uh, so. Uh, that was basically the only thing that I had on those charts. Uh, the other comment I had had to do with renewable energy. When we're looking at what, eleven million acres of wildland, they're looking at putting. Green energy projects on too. Um. I certainly hope they don't infringe on the sage grouse, uh, because. You can't have one federal agency saying it's a great idea and another one saying, oh, my gosh, you're killing animals, so. Uh, they, they better get their act together on this. Pretty quick. It's been going on for a long time. I don't, I just don't see. Where we're able to take all this wildland away and not impact on all the critters that we're talking about in the future. Anything else? Okay. Thank you on that one. Move right along. Uh, sage grouse. Um, fourteen C. Possible action, presentation and provide direction to the county manager regarding the Bureau of Land Management, propose utility scale solar energy development final program. I got. Programmatic. Environmental impact statement. Direction may include authorizing the county manager and RCI to draft and submit a formal protest letter. Go ahead.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. Yeah, so we have to get our comments in pretty quick on this one, so, um. Wanted to get, uh, the board's take. Jeremy is gonna do a quick presentation on this item and. We'll open it.
All right, uh, Commissioners, good morning. I believe the presentation is in your background document, um, and I do have the ability to share screen, so I will do that. Um, as you'll recall, several months ago, we talked about the BLM's proposed utility scale, uh, solar energy development plan. Uh, when it was in the draft EIS, um, form, and you all approved, uh, some comments to that, and, um, if you'll recall, at that time, they had five different alternatives. Including the no action where we have basically areas that are, um, excluded from solar application and variance areas. Uh, where a proponent would have to come to local government and local BLM and kind of walk through why they think their project is in a good location. Um, all the action alternatives proposed to do away with that variance process, uh, which we objected to at the time. And then alternative three was kind of the BLM's proposed alternative at the time, where they had a series of resource-based exclusions, slope exclusions. And then this transmission proximity, so anything beyond, uh, ten miles from an existing or planned transmission line. That was over a hundred KV would be excluded from solar applications. Um, when we got the final back, uh, in just comparing it, what you'll see is that the proposed plan has a significant amount of acreage. Um, available for projects or solar applications in Lion County. And I think for some of the statistics, um, that some of our partners have done, uh, there is approximately sixteen percent of all the county. Available for applications, um, under the proposed plan, and so it didn't necessarily come out. Uh, the way we probably would have liked to have seen it, and that shows, um, really well in the map. So the first map. Is the no action alternative. Again, this is what we're under right now, where basically all the orange areas in the county are excluded. Um, from solar application, and then the light blue areas are the quote-unquote variance areas. Um, and you'll recall, we went through this on the project proposed, uh, for the west side of the, the Mason Valley, and we're able to provide. Um, some input back to the BLM and the proponent, um, on our concerns before it even got to NEPA. So not only does a proposed plan do away with that variance process, um, but it also opens up significant, um, amounts shown in green. Uh, of area that's open for solar development. And if you kind of toggle back and forth between the two, what you'll see, or what kind of jumps out at me anyway, is that. All the light blue areas kind of stay in. And are expanded, and so we have significant areas around both Smith and Mason Valley, uh, that are still open for solar development. Um, you have areas around existing wildlife management areas or even the East Walker State Park that would be open to solar development. Um, you've got some significant areas. Around the Mason Valley where BLM has identified lands for disposal, uh, that are now open for solar development, uh, which will be a conflict. Um, and I think the main reason that you're seeing those blue areas, um, under the no action. Expand into the green areas on this proposed plan is because in the final, the BLM actually increased their distance from existing or planned power lines. From ten miles to fifteen miles. From ten miles to fifteen miles, and they also reduced. Uh the capacity of those power lines from a hundred KV to sixty-nine KV. So all of a sudden, now you're picking up a smaller distribution line and saying anything, you know, within sixty uh. Anything within fifteen miles of that line is available for an application. Um what the BLM is saying, uh kind of their spin on this is we're trying to provide maximum flexibility. For the solar industry, um while also realizing that this is a programmatic plan. Um and that a lot of these areas that might not be suitable for solar development. Will um essentially be screened out once we get into a local NEPA process. The problem I see with that is um it kind of shifts the planning burden. From the BLM to uh state and local governments who are directly affected by this. So now all of a sudden, if we have a speculative application come in in one of these areas that's green. But really isn't a good place to develop solar on the ground. Guess who it it's incumbent upon to make sure that doesn't happen? You know, that becomes Lion County, um hopefully the local BLM office and the citizens. And in my opinion. You know, that's not the way these planning efforts should work. So a lot of times uh when we get to this point of a planning process. Um things are pretty well worked out, and I suggest that there isn't a need for a protest. Um on this particular one, I would strongly recommend a protest. Um this isn't unique to Lion County. Churchill County approved a protest yesterday. White Pine County approved. Moving forward with a protest last week. Um and I know at a minimum Humboldt and Eureka County are also going to protest, and I would imagine some other states. Um what I would propose is the main themes of the protests are not all that inconsistent with what, in fact, they're exactly in line. With what our comments were to the draft plan. So number one is um our concern with the scoping area. I think a lot of the issues around the mapping and the way that came out. Um is because you're trying to plan eleven states all at the same time. And quite frankly. Uh that's not a good way to run a railroad, in my opinion. Um the mapping is incomplete and inaccurate. Um a lot of the exclusions are, you know, relying on out-of-date RMPs. Uh which is the case in Lion County with how old the consolidated Carson City RMP is. Um we had asked for some specific exclusions in terms of areas with over out, over allocated uh water basins. Uh that weren't included. And so I think that would be a a key protest point. Um another one that I mentioned is making sure that some semblance of the variance process stays in. So. If a project shows up in one of those green areas uh that we know on the ground is not a good spot. Uh you don't even get into a NEPA process that you could screen it out um before it gets to that. Um I think there are some procedural issues, quite frankly, with how. Uh kind of the rules changed on that ten to fifteen miles and a hundred KV to sixty-nine KV lines. Uh and then certainly we can identify some of our geographic areas of concerns. Uh that we identified in the draft letter. So those are kind of my recommendations at this point. Um if the board approves this, obviously I would work with County Manager Haskins to put together. The the protest letter and the protest points. Um we may also collaborate with some of the other counties because we're all kind of seeing and saying the same things. Uh at this point. So at that, I will stop my screen share uh and chairman or commissioners and be happy to take any questions.
Start with Commissioner Hendricks.
I definitely want to see this happen, and I'd like to see it as strongly worded as possible. Because they've absolutely ignored all public comment. And they've not taken any into consideration what the public wants or local government.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh Mr. Drew, thank you. As always, very comprehensive and and good job. I couldn't agree more with Commissioner Hen Hendricks. We need to send as forceful a statement as we can. And in fact, I uh got an agenda item to request later on the same topic. So good, good work, Jeremy.
Commissioner Kellen.
Well, I'm on board with it, so. That's all I got to say.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Um Mr. Drew, just a question and. Maybe you can set me straight. Um. I I agree with the other commissioners on on this, but. Uh I've got a question. Why, why are we so anxious to put? Solar panels on public land and and maybe. Maybe the amount of warehouse space. Uh on their roofs for solar panels in our county. We have a ton of warehouses. Wh- why aren't we putting panels on those first? Um and maybe it's property rights, whatever. I don't know, but it just seems like. Any any land that is owned by these corporations, it's too valuable to put. Solar panels on. But they have they're sending a message that they devalue public land when. That that's the first place they want to go grab. So your thoughts on warehouse roof space for the solar panels if they. We've got to have them. Am I am I wrong there? And. Um again, just my general thoughts on how they're devaluing our public land.
Yeah, great, great question, Commissioner. So philosophically, in my opinion, I think you and I align, right? So to me. Um if you're going to develop renewable energy, the best place to develop it is closer to your load center, right? I mean, just. Um disturbances in public land philosophy aside. Um to me, if you can develop your energy closer to where you're using your energy, you've got a lot less line loss and a lot less iss- issues with efficiencies. You know, there are challenges that come with putting solar panels over parking lots or um on top of ware- warehouse spaces. Um but quite frankly, there's a lot of challenges with developing solar on public lands too, right? Um I think this administration uh and this BLM has been. Um very pro renewable energy, not just solar. Um but a lot of other projects, you know, Lion County is just starting to see that with some of the projects that have been proposed. In and around Lion County. Uh quite frankly, some of the other counties um have it even worse. If you look at Esmeralda and Nye. Um and White Pine, they have literally dozens of solar applications pending in those variance areas. Um. And it is, i- it's extremely frustrating. Uh one of the things that this plan cited. In the draft was um a an act that was passed in twenty twenty. That talked about a goal of so many gigawatts of renewable energy being developed on so on public lands. Um by a certain date. Well, guess what? BLM's already permitted that. So. Um you know, that criteria kind of comes off the table. Um. You know, you you talk to BLM, they are under a multiple use mandate, uh and one of the multiple uses is is renewable energy. Um but I think the key and what most of the counties have been saying throughout this process is. We're open to the concept of developing renewable energy on public lands. Um but to your point, make sure it's in the right spot and in in areas that maybe have already been disturbed. Or already dominated by things like cheat grass. That aren't right up against our communities or or important watersheds or groundwater basins. Um and quite frankly, I I think what you're seeing is. Uh the renewable energy industry flex a little bit of muscle here. Um and you know, I I think. The the problem with the BLM's perspective of let's provide flexibility in where these projects goes. Is fatally flawed in that what that does fundamentally is takes the planning burden off of the BLM. And puts it directly on local governments. And maybe I shouldn't say that, right? Because. In one sense, it's job security for me. Um but I don't think it's fair for us as a county. Have to do the BLM's job in terms of citing these projects in the appropriate locations. Uh and so that's been, I think, my frustration and some of the philosophical difference. That I think we've run into throughout this process. And quite frankly, the eleven state planning area. It's hard enough to get data right for one county, right? We saw that in developing the maps for the land use plan and how long that took. Or excuse me, the proposed um. Uh lands bill. Um it's almost impossible to get the the data and the mapping correct for an eleven state planning area. And so. You know, to me, walking this back down to a district or state level would be the appropriate course of action. Um from here, and we will certainly make that point in the protest. Um one other point that I'll make while I have the floor is that. Um I hear the commissioners in terms of, you know, making this as plain and as strong as we can in in the protest. Um I would also suggest a a carbon copy to both the congressional delegation and the governor's office. And the reason I say that is the governor's office does have a sixty-day consistency review as well. And so I think hearing from. Um Lion and other counties is going to be important for them to.
Well, one more thing, Mr. Drew, and forgive my ignorance on this, but these solar companies. Are they flipping the bill for this? Or are they getting federal grants to put? Federal monies to put the solar panels in. And I guess my question is, are they getting our tax dollars to build this? They keep the profits and they're putting it on our public land. It seems like. It seems like they are. Pretty sharp when it comes to how they fund their money-making projects and and um. And the land in which it goes upon.
Commissioner, and for your record, Jeremy Drew, I I can't speak specifically to where the capital comes for actually planning and developing those projects, but I know on the back end. Um and one of the things that local governments really concerned about are the tax abatements. Uh that come. And so, you know, one of the things that is always discussed when a project is proposed is how much revenue it will generate for. A county and during construction, that certainly may, you know, may be true. But then there's also the potential. Um for state abatements. Um I know on the BLM side, um recently, they changed some of their regulations to significantly reduce the rental rates. Um on an area once a right of way is issued. And so. Um I do know we're living in a time that's very favorable in terms of trying to push projects forward on public lands. And maybe I'll just leave it at that, so I don't speak beyond uh get out over my skis.
Thank you, Mr. Drew.
Anything further, Commissioner Keller? Um yeah, uh Commissioner Henderson, go ahead.
Uh say, thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, it's just a comment. I don't really have a question. But I find it ironic and unfortunately typical of the federal government. That we had a discussion earlier about they're gonna want to give us. Muches of money to develop outdoor recreation, but they're taking public lands and turning it into solar farms where you can't recreate. It's just mind-boggling what the government does.
Eh exactly. Um the comment I have is we constantly hear BLM's working with the solar people. BLM's working with them constantly. Um but they have a real hard time working with us. You know, taking our input. Uh it really is kind of bothersome. Um when we do send um this protest letter, and I hope we do. Address the governor and Congressman Amade and anybody else that will listen. Um that maybe they should step in and say, okay, we're going to build all these solar panels. They need to be made in the U.S. with U.S. labor and U.S. materials, or we won't accept them. Um because we keep keep hitting this, well, we got to make it in the USA, and then we buy everything from China. So, you know, I'm pretty sure that'll kind of. Put them in a spin, but uh I definitely think we need to involve our uh higher-ups in the in government. So definitely appreciate that input. Anything further? Okay, now this one is um. For possible action, do we have any public input? Looks like we have Alexia Sober on Zoom. Is that Saber?
It's it's sober, Alexia Sober, for the record. Um thank you, Commissioners, for giving me an opportunity to speak on this topic. I just wanted to offer some thought for consideration as you are all considering um. The 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 solar farm placement on uh lands in Lion County. That the consideration is that, you know, the solar panels come offline. After, you know, fifteen to twenty years, and they become waste. Um and so as you're communicating with the BLM and with the state um government, maybe consider. Uh talking to them about an end-of-life plan. And and I must, for the record, um. Mention too that I I am a an employee of Comstock, Inc. And subsidiary Comstock Metals, which recycle solar panels right there in Silver Springs. Um but we do so because we see a great wave of solar waste coming online, and it's all going to landfill. And that's a very, very serious consideration for, you know, eleven million acres of solar farms. So I just wanted to bring that to um the Commissioner's attention. Uh for consideration. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Anything further? Oh, yes, go ahead.
Leslie Sine from Smith Valley. Um thank you very much. Appreciate that you have agendized this. Appreciate that you brought it uh forth earlier. Appreciate that you submitted public comments. And I really am supporting you uh continuing forward with protest. It's pretty frustrating that many coun- counties actually didn't even take that first step of the comments, so now they can't even protest. Um and and the the themes for your protest are fantastic, and I think. Some of what I'm going to say may be inserted under some of these, but so we wouldn't know until the final letter. So I just wanted to throw it out there. I think what's absolutely critical in looking at these maps is, and and this wasn't the initial comments, so you you can protest it. And I think it would fit under the geographic areas of concern. That there be a buffer of at least a mile uh for a zoned ag and zone residential. I mean, this is really across the whole plan. Uh you know, Smith Valley is not the the only place that has. Has this up to their property lines, residential property lines, but the rural communities are so at risk and and. I'm so happy that you, as our representatives, are taking a a lead on this and really pushing this. And I hope that that would be a specific item in the letter that would be addressed. And also other items you address that may fit under some of these. And maybe what Mr. Drew and Mr. Haskin will include. But I want to hit on our excluding areas that aren't consistent with our own county adaptive plans and policies. That could lead towards the governor's consistency review. Um if it's not consistent with counties, you know, that he could have some say in there. And then um. A- and Mr. Drew may be able to answer this. I know uh you touched on it, Citizens to Protect Smith Valley touched on it, and NACO even touched on it. Whether or not uh planning at this level violates congressional directives, as as was noted. Um I wasn't able to see if that was really addressed in in the hundreds of plages of the final plan. Um so I would hope if that hasn't been clarified, that that could be a point. And finally, I I hope as members of NACO that you will push to have NACO submit a protest. Uh they did, they did initially, so they're eligible to. If they don't submit a protest, they could never litigate in the future. So. I'm really hoping as members that you will do that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anything further? Oh, yes.
Um Judith Harker from Smith Valley. Um. I don't want to, you know, restate everything that Leslie said, but I I am uh very much pleased that you guys are going to go ahead and. And submit this protest letter. Make it strong, make it clear. I also want to think of, how do you think about uh the the one-mile buffer should also include. Public facilities, schools, parks, government offices, cemeteries, hospitals, any kind of public. Um uh entity that's could be threatened by small local communities that would abut BLM lands and that this would be a problem there. I know, and I'm speaking personally because I look at my office window and I'll be seeing solar panels. About seventy feet from my window. This is, this is crazy. So I I do want to include the buffer. Um I I'm glad that we've included the uh elimination of over-allocated water basins. And everybody knows that in Smith Valley, Mason Valley, there's no more water to be had for. For a facility like this, and I I please include that as a as an exclusion factor. And um I also want to make sure that we're, we got um the status as a cooperating agency, the county, although you're going to. Request that. Um and I hope that would have some, I know it's kind of moot at this point. But for um new utility scale solar applications. When they come to the county, I I I'm hoping that um having that. Cooperating agency status might give us a heads up a little quicker for new applications. So I don't know if it will or not, but I'm hoping that that will. And um I guess the other thing that I do want to mention is that um. Um that we uh. We we do, uh you know, the mapping is incomplete and out of date, and we really want to emphasize that we need an absolutely correct data in order to go ahead with this. And I agree that this this burden should not be at the. At the county level and local level. It needs to be at the state and uh at and beyond level. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Keller, comment.
I just want to make a quick comment. Naco is, is working with this for the people in the room. Uh, National Naco is also, it's a concern on national level too. Solar fields are all over the United States. This, this, what's happening, we just happen to have a lot of land. But there, there's concerns all over the whole United States. So I don't think this is a an issue just us local. There's a lot of people fighting against it. I did have a chance to talk with a BLM director yesterday. And I was kind of happy with what he was talking to me about. We didn't want to go into detail about it, but it's, uh, I think he's a good partner to have right now and, and as our state director. So I think, I think we will, we can move forward.
Okay. All right. So you have to come up with a motion to direct the draft. Do we have that?
I moved that we authorize the county manager and RCI to draft and submit a formal protest letter regarding the utility scale solar energy development final problematic EIS. And to include all the things that Jeremy talked about and as many of those things as the public talked about as possible. And it be as strongly worded as possible. And be copied to the governor and our congressional delegation.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, motion by Commissioner Hendrickson, a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Uh, let's see if we can get done with yours here before noon and we're going to take a break for lunch.
Mine, the rest of the agenda, so we, I think we can get through it.
All right, we'll see. I'll move fast. For possible action, review and approve the, an interlocal agreement between Lyon County and Story County regarding improvements on Six Mile Canyon Road, San Clemens Avenue and Rowan's Gulch Road in Lyon County. Go ahead.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So this is working in partnership with Story County to correct an issue that's been happening on Six Mile Canyon Road. So anybody that's been up there knows that that road is not suitable for trucks. But, and while it is posted with no truck signs, we still have an issue there. And so Story County approached us about doing some improvements on the Lyon County side, which would also include a route to turn trucks around. So the improvements will include signage and some widening so that trucks can have a turn radius to, to turn around there. And so that's what this is about. We do have the, the right of way necessary for that. And essentially they would pay for all the improvements and then we would pay to maintain it.
Questions? Public input? Seeing none. All of promotion?
Yeah, I got one.
Okay, go ahead.
What, what, what's the base? What's it, what's improvement? I was going through that.
The, so the map was there, uh, was attached as an exhibit and part of this.
Cleaning corners.
Yeah, it's white.
It's all gravel or are we going?
No, it's all paved in that area.
Okay.
Has Chairman Hockaday, any of the area where we're talking about for the turnaround areas have been damaged by flooding at all in the past? I mean,
if, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd tell you, I know that we've been working with Story County on flooding issues in that area and they've made a bunch of improvements as well. So, but I couldn't tell you the specific to this.
Anything further? Okay. Already got public input, so we'll go to a motion for improvement there.
Mr. Chair, I have moved that we approve an interlocal agreement between Lyon County and Story County regarding improvements on Six Mile Canyon Road, Sam Clemens Avenue and Rowan Gulch Road in Lyon County.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Going to 14E for possible action, approve an extension of an agreement for public defender services in the Walker River Justice Court area with Walther Law, PLLC, extending from September 30, 2024 to October 31st, 2024 for $40,000 per month, plus bail hearings at $900 per weekend.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. Yeah, so this is a contract extension. It's a one month extension. Um, when we initially started down this process of going through the RFP for for public defender services, we, we anticipated it'd take a little bit less time, but we didn't initially get any responses. So it took a little bit, took a little bit more work. And so that's what this contract is for is just a one month extension.
Okay. Commissioners, questions? Public input? Seeing none, we'll move on. Motion on that.
Move to approve an extension of an agreement for public defender services in the Walker River Justice Court area with Walther Law, PLLC, extending from September 30th, 2024 to October 31st, 2024 for $40,000 per month, plus bail hearings at $900 per weekend.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hendrick, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, 14F for possible action, approve an agreement from November 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027 with Brock Law LTD to serve as one of Lyon County's primary public defenders with primary responsibility in the Walker River Justice Court in the amount of $420,000 per year.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So we went through the procurement process. Um, we had two applicants. Brock Law was the one that won the scoring on that. And so we have attached a contract. Actually, there was a, there was laid back up there. Um, that was provided, that laid back up is because we have to submit those contracts to the Department of Defense. And they submitted some comments, gotten kind of late. And so we got them to as quick as possible. That's about it. I believe the changes were pretty minor.
Commissioners, anything? Public input? Seeing none, motion on 14F.
Move to approve an agreement from November 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027 with Brock Law Limited to serve as one of Lyon County's primary public defenders with primary responsibility in the Walker River Justice Court in the amount of $420,000 per year.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Um, motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, moving on to 14G for possible action, approve an indigent defense conflict council agreement with Walther Law, PLLC, effective November 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 to provide the primary conflict counsel at the Walker River Justice Court at $200 per hour.
Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So this contract, um, as it states is for, um, primary conflict counsel. It's a part of this entire restructure of our public defender contracts. Again, um, there was comments provided by the Department of Indigent Defense. And so, uh, there is laid back up for 14G.
Commissioners, any comments?
Is it too late to get my law to grant?
Never.
All right. Any public input? Seeing none, we'll take a motion on 14G.
Move to approve an indigent defense conflict council agreement with Walther Law, PLLC, effective November 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025 to provide the primary conflict counsel at the Walker River Justice Court at $200 per hour.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion by Commissioner Hendrick, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. 14A for possible action, approve an indigent defense council agreement with Walther Law, PLLC, effective November 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027 to provide the counsel at the third judicial western regional drug court for $3,350 per month.
Go ahead. Haskin, Lyon County Manager. Um, so this is the contract for, um, for drug court moving forward. Uh, it wasn't included as a part of the other contract. Um, and so we did a separate contract that the previous contractor agreed to keep drug court, um, one of the responsibilities. And so that's what this contract is for. I think, once again, there was comments provided by the Department of Indigent Defense. Um, and it was provided as like back.
Commissioners, comments, questions? Public input? Motion.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion to approve an indigent defense council agreement with Walther Law, PLLC, uh, effective November 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027 to provide the counsel at the third judicial western regional drug court for $3,350 per month.
Okay. All right. Uh, motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item 15, agenda requests. We'll start with Commissioner Keller. Commissioner Jacobson.
No, sir.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually do have a couple. Um, one, I would like an agenda request for us to review our policy on the advisory boards. And the advisory boards are a creation of, of this board and, you know, some of the agendas I've been seeing have been, I'm not sure. That, that, yeah. So it makes, take us, take a look at it and see if, if any tweaking. And then secondly, I'd like another agenda item to discuss large scale solar facilities and actions we can take up to, and possibly including issue of a moratorium. Which I realize the federal government would ignore, but it would send a statement. That's it.
I like, ignore us. This makes a point. Commissioner Hendricks.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to have us take a look at admending our design standards to disallow flat top roofs on apartments.
And I don't have any agenda requests. So we're moving now into the commissioner's final comments. Uh, final comments, Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Um, just the date, um, I'm on the Fernley Boys and Girls Club Board, um, October 3rd, uh, 5 o'clock starts the cocktail hour, 6 o'clock, the recognition and dinner um, for the Fernley Boys and Girls Club Awards banquet held at the Meadows, uh, kind of out there by Pioneer Crossing.
Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, I would like to thank Mike Lennox of Silver State Distillery in Silver Springs for donating, uh, two bottles of wine from his distillery to represent, uh, a business here in Lyon County for our Naco basket.
Chairman Hockaday, good call.
Good call, uh, Commissioner, I, I would like to thank Bill Grigg and Greg Apieres for donating uh, some of his Fernley honey to the basket as well.
Anything further, Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Henderson?
Nope. Looking forward to Naco.
Okay. Commissioner Hendricks, anything?
No.
Okay. Uh, just a final comment. Hopefully see some of you out there at the cemetery on the 21st. Said, bring, bring your shovel and rakes. And last, public participation, anybody wishing to participate in public comment at this time may step forward and state their name for the record, sign in, and you will have three minutes. Everybody on Zoom? Nobody in the room? Okay. We do have a closed session. Said, oh, no. Um, so we are going to adjourn the public session at 11:50 and you're all dismissed.